Hello and welcome to the first interview of the Doylestown Democrats Vote Local Interview Series. Today I'm joined by Mayor Ron Strauss and Borough Council President Jack O'Brien. Ron, would you like to start and tell us about the main functions of the mayor position?
Well, the main functions frankly of both of our positions and all those who are elected to Borough Council is to preserve public safety first and foremost. How we define that is perhaps a little different. So, public safety, of course, first and foremost, come, our police functions come to mind. And so that is happens to be our largest function in terms of expenditures on the part of, on the part of the borough. And we'll get into the details of that. But then how we define public safety beyond our police functions. For us in Doylestown, that means everything from the quality of our water coming from the Doylestown Water Department to our sidewalks, to safety for pedestrians, and to environmental safety. So those functions all in the larger umbrella come under the purview of public safety.
Awesome. Jack, would you be able to tell me about being on the Borough Council?
Yeah, as a member of the Borough Council, I started out, I was running, my brother-in-law was running for state rep, and I had no interest in politics at all. I had been retired for two or three years, and I volunteered to help work at a polling station for him. And at the same time, one of the local councilmen was stepping down, and I guess they were silently looking for somebody, and they approached me. And as they say, the rest is history. And the thing I found most intriguing about that was that having lived in the borough for 50 years since I got out of college, I always knew it was a wonderful place to be and live and all that kind of stuff. But I never realized all the little things that went on. So becoming a member of council, it kind of opened the curtain a little bit, and you got to see all of the things that have to happen. Not just the council members themselves, but the staff and even the business community, how they all kind of worked together to bring it together. And it was eye-opening to me, and I found it very interesting.
Yeah, so I mean, speaking of the staff and speaking of the other council members and et cetera, Ron, would you be able to tell me a little bit about the structure of the Borough Government and how that is made up?
Sure. So we have Borough employees, but we also have a, our police department is a regional department. So our 28 members of the police department are actually employed by the Central Bucks Regional Police Commission. Jack and I both are members of the Police Commission. And the Police Commission is made up of three municipalities, Chalfont and New Britain, with Doylestown by a significant margin being the largest of those three. So that is kind of, because it is a regional department, that is, I wouldn't say those police members are part of our Borough Staff, but they certainly are through contract part of our Borough Staff. Then we have the Borough Government itself, which I believe, Jack, has 28 employees?
I believe it's 28 employees. There's an open position right now. Somebody has left, and right now, due to the COVID situation, we're hesitating to fill that position, so.
And those 28 employees are focused on our parking department, enforcement of parking. Our Public Works Department consists of six members.
I believe that's correct.
Yeah. We obviously have finance and the management of the borough itself. So it's a stable employment picture. I don't think it's increased in years.
No.
Although the functions have increased, but we've economized on that, and people have, we've found ways to be more efficient without increasing staff.
And the other, there's one other aspect, I think, we didn't mention, the Water Department. It's a relatively small group, but, and they rely pretty heavily, when a water main breaks, it's all hands on deck to get it fixed. So it's Public Works supplies a lot of the manpower, but there are a couple of certified water operators that actually go out and do the testing of the wells and all that kind of stuff, so.
The Water Department is really an essential and important function. I mean, there's no denying Doylestown is an older community and has an aging infrastructure for that reason. So we're very conscious that the quality of the water needs to be maintained. The kind of testing we do is beyond the kind of testing that's required by the state and in turn the federal government, because we're conscious of the fact that we have to produce a excellent product for the people who live here.
So obviously, we spoke about a lot of the different departments, right? But I think a lot of people will be wondering, what is the actual budget of the Borough Government? How do you come up with the budget each year? And what does that process look like? Either one of you could take that if you'd like.
I'm gonna hold this up here. This is our budget that we just finished adopting for next year. It's made up of a number of components. There's some argument when people say, our budget is $6 million, our budget is $12 million. If you look at all of the component pieces, it's on the order of $11 or $12 million. Typically though, we talk mostly about the general fund, and that's where we pay for the day-to-day operation of the borough. We have a water fund that we talked about just a moment ago. We have a fire tax fund, we have a road tax fund. I'm trying to think of all the various pieces here, but it's, the general fund is on the order of about $6 billion. And out of that comes the money that we, our contribution to the municipal, the Central Bucks Regional Police Department is about half of that, maybe even a little bit more than that. So again, as to the mayor's point earlier, the policing is a significant piece of our budget. We also have a reserve fund. That was established back in, I think, 90, the mid 90s, when we sold our sewer department to Bucks County Water and Sewer. And at that time, several million dollars were taken out and put in a, what they called a rate stabilization fund, so that if any rates went up as a result of that sales, it would help to ease the burden across the community. Since that time, we have invested that, and a lot of the returns from that have been used to fund a lot of our capital improvement projects. We've done things like in the Public Works Yard, we built a salt bin that allows us to bring bulk salt in and have significant savings on that because we have it onsite. We don't have to bring it in as needed. We also converted to solar power down there. And we recently did a study, or we had Johnson Controls come in and look at our operations and make recommendations as to things we could do, converting to LED street lighting, other types of things with the monitoring of the water system. And that was kind of a unique contract in that they made an estimate of what the savings would be, and they kind of guaranteed it, that there would be an audit after they were completed, and if they didn't meet these goals, they would reimburse us for the difference. So it was kind of a unique situation. That was done about, what, three years ago, I think?
So we're three years into that project, and indeed, the savings every year more than covers the cost of instituting that project. So I think we, I think we may have changed as many as 1,500 streetlights?
We changed every streetlight in the borough, including the historic ones. And it was quite a, quite a bit of discussion about the color of the light, would it, you know, would it be appropriate? People were happy. Some people didn't like the LED overhead lights, you know, on the non-historic light because they were too bright or too harsh or something like that. So there was some controversy, but like most of those things, it's a blip. It comes up and it comes down, so you know, you work through it.
A portion of the municipal tax bill also goes to both our emergency services, the ambulance services, and a portion also goes to the Doylestown Fire Company. It's a designated portion. Those who are paying tax bills see it on the tax bill as a designated portion of the tax bill every year. So we obviously have, as a result of that, and because of the services they provide, we have a close working relationship with both the Fire Company and the Bucks County Emergency Services.
And this year, we, as most everyone knows, we've undertaken a large project on Broad Street with the conversion of the PennDOT building to a new Borough Hall and Police Headquarters, and the park in what was their equipment yard. And as a result of that, we knew last year, we recognized it was going to have to be a tax increase to pay for that debt service. We took, I think, a $5 million, 30-year bond on that, so.
And that actually is, represents, besides the need for a new police department, a new physical police department, because our current one is deficient in square footage. Besides that, and the new Borough Hall, of course, we're building a three-acre, a little more than three-acre park. That project in total represents a tremendous commitment to the environment in terms of Doylestown Borough. What we took in terms of PennDOT, where the park is, we took a brownfield, removed the contaminated material, and are building a safe public park there. We took a historic building, actually a WPA-era building where Borough Hall and the Police Department is going to be, and are repurposing that building with environmental standards to serve us going forward. We're also installing charging stations for electric cars as part of that. Actually, we, you probably know, we also, we already have a couple of charging stations in the middle of town. I think we were the first municipality in Doylestown to have them, first municipality in the county to have them. And now, charging stations are becoming more familiar, and in fact, our new, the new Wawa facility that's being built will have charging stations as part of their construction as well.
I think I'd. We'd be remiss if we didn't mention, with those first charging stations, they were donated by a business owner in town. So again, that speaks to the community of Doylestown, you know? It's not just the government. Everybody has an opportunity, excuse me, an opportunity to contribute, and they contribute in many ways, so.
And it's a good working relationship when we find that opportunity, because they were donated by a private business, they were actually installed by our Public Works.
So that actually, it's a nice segue into where we can go with this, is because Doylestown, especially Doylestown Borough, is very, very popular. So, well, it is, and people do come and travel, and people come and check out our local shops. So what do you guys think is the intertwining of the business community and the government? And how do you work with the businesses? How do, how does that relationship work? And actually, reaching up into the county wide, because obviously, the county government is there as well, so.
Well, none of that happens overnight. And when we talk about Doylestown, and it's always great to hear people say, do you know how good this town is? And we do know how good this town is. That doesn't mean there's not more to be done, but we do recognize that. So, I mean, we have this extraordinary long history. We have a considerable inventory of historic buildings and attractive buildings. We have, excuse me, talented individuals who live in the town, who have the human resources, the financial resources also, in some cases, to help. Of course, we're the county seat. The county is our largest employer. Been the county seat for over 100 years. And then we have, in the business community, a focus on independent businesses for a long, long time. So while, not unlike any other place, you'll find some businesses that represent change, chains, I get that out right, you'll see an emphasis on independent business owners. Now, that provides a great opportunity for individuality, it also provides challenges, challenges particularly in times like today. Because those independent businesses do not have the corporate structure behind them that can help them weather COVID in a more successful way. So there are significant challenges. And in fact, that probably is, to give a long-winded answer to your question, that is an indication of how we work together with our businesses. We realize, we recognize that they have challenges. We talk to them about what those challenges are, and to the extent that we're able to financially support them or support them empathetically, we will do that to see them through the crisis and to make sure that we have a strong business environment going forward. So this, for instance, this past year, we engaged in a series of programs to close streets on weekends to help our businesses weather the COVID epidemic. We did it on an experimental basis, and there's no doubt about it, excuse me, that we're going to do it again this year.
I would think so. And in fact, if the weather were better, we'd be doing it right now. I think the weather has been a significant impact to the ability to do the outdoor dining, along with some other challenges that came along, like the tearing up of East State Streets so that Pico could come in and replace gas lines, you know? And that while the county theater was being revitalized with, you know, that has really put a dent in the ability to get through that section of town. Hopefully, we're coming to the end of that, but.
But we work with the businesses to find the best time to do that. It was an infrastructure improvement that we needed to do, and obviously, the best time to do that is this time of year.
Yeah. And unfortunately, it was the middle of the night, so it didn't impact on the businesses. But the poor people that were trying to sleep in the apartments, you know? Doylestown has a, I forget the numbers, is it 40% of the residents are renters, which is kind of unusual. And I think another aspect of Doylestown that sometimes gets forgotten is, for a town this size, relatively small community of about four square miles or so, we have a significant cultural aspect, you know, the Mercer Museum, Fon Hill, which is technically in the township, but it's completely surrounded on three sides by the borough, and Buckingham on the other side, and also the Missionary Museum. So, you know, we're very fortunate in that regard, too.
But that also, that produces an obligation on our part, for a small community to sustain these kinds of important cultural institutions. You know, we were proud of them, but we were also obligated to work with them to make sure that they thrive.
So obviously, that's a ton about the Doylestown Borough Local Government and how you guys have worked with the local businesses, and especially in a time like COVID, we've seen how important local government is. I guess I'll go to you with this one, Jack. What made you decide to run for local government? Like what made you decide that this is what I have to do, and this is the way I can make a change happen?
Well, as I had said earlier in my opening remarks, I kind of was enticed into it, if you will. I had been retired for three years, and I think my wife was very glad to see me find something to get me out of the house a little bit. But I, my background, I was an electrical engineer and wound up as a program manager. So I was used to, I had a background, or the talents had been instilled in me, to run large programs. When I got involved with the government, I kind of took the role of, I'll just sit back and watch what happens, because, you know, learn from your peers, if you will. So I wasn't really active, I was more in learning mode. Very quickly though, I kind of picked up on it. I think this, I'm in, at the, in the last year of my second term, so this is my, I'm just starting my eighth year, and I'm seriously considering running again. So that, that kind of what, it was, it was not that I was looking for something to do, but it was an opportunity that came along, and I saw a lot of synergy between my background and what I perceived to be what's involved with government. And it's worked out to be quite enjoyable. That's kind of a word you don't usually hear. I get a lot of satisfaction out of that. And I also felt, having lived in the borough for 50 years, and my hours were such that I was very seldom here during the week. I'd leave in the morning about 5:30, quarter to 6:00, and get home sometimes at 8:00, 9:00 o'clock at night. So it was, it was a long day. So it was an opportunity to give a little bit back to the community that had given so much to me and my family. So that's kind of where it is. That's how I got into it.
Ron, would you like to tell us what made you decide to run for mayor?
I had been serving as the chairman of two of the boards of the borough, the Economic Development Advisory Board and our Human Relations Commission. I was actually, the Human Relations Commission was created 10 years ago, about 10 years ago, and I was asked to chair it as the founding chairman of that. So I was not looking at running for mayor, and a couple members, including, a couple members of Borough Council called me up and sat down with me and suggested that this would be a good thing to do. I take a lot of pride in Doylestown. I wasn't quite sure that it was a good thing to do, and by the way, Doylestown was in transition then, in terms of the politics of the town. The first time I ran, I won by 73 votes. But I mean, the way we approach Doylestown, the way candidates approach Doylestown varies. Some are motivated by an issue, maybe a personal issue that they've had with the borough or in the borough, or a one particular political issue that motivates them. And others are motivated by, to be custodians of the community in which they live, sort of a broader view. Both have a place in terms of public office, local public office. But it is also apparent when you see candidates that they are motivated in different ways.
Yeah, so obviously, we're talking about very small margins, and when we're talking about local elections, right? So that is obviously one reason why it's important to vote in these local elections. But Jack, would you like to expand on why you think it's important to get involved locally and vote locally, which is the whole idea of what we're trying to do here, is instill this idea of why it's important to vote locally?
Well, I think it was a Tip O'Neill that said, "All politics is local." And largely, the impact that local community, a local government has on the community is much more significant on a day-to-day basis than anything that happens at the state level or especially at the country, you know, country level. So it's important, you know? What do people care about? They want to know, they're living in a safe community, they want to know that we're good stewards of that community, whether that means, to Ron's point earlier, we have safe water. I mean, look at what's happening today, as most recently, in Flint, Michigan, you know? That's a disaster. The roads are paved, the snow is removed, those kinds of things. Those have a very, probably you don't even think about it because it's so common, but that has a much more major impact on your day-to-day life than anything that happens in Washington or in Harrisburg. Although, things that happen in Washington and Harrisburg do have an impact on it. Sometimes it's positive, sometimes it's not as positive as we'd like it to be. So I think also, we have a fiscal responsibility. You know, we talk about Doylestown, and the mayor likes to refer to Greater Doylestown. I always kid him about that. I say, "Well, you're talking about the borough, the township, or which one of the two zip codes?" They're all, everybody identifies as Doylestown. You know, if you look at the car dealers, there's one car dealership that's physically in the borough, there's a couple that are in the township. Most of them are in either Plumstead or Buckingham, but they all refer to themselves as Doylestown. And that carries a certain cachet with it, I think. People want to identify with Doylestown because of its history and its record, so.
And, you know, Greater Doylestown, I would never say that in front of a Doylestown Township supervisor.
Well, they're not here, so don't worry.
There you go. But, you know, that has been acquired over a period of time. I mean, we have this history, yes, we're the county seat, that brings part of that cachet to appearance. We're the focus of all sorts of political activity, and, you know, this past year, we were the focus of 45, maybe 46 rallies and demonstrations for different points of view. And so, you know, that is a distinction that we can take pride in, that makes us perhaps a community that has more impact than other communities of our size. And it goes without saying that other communities in Bucks County look to Doylestown as to what we're doing. To the issues of, to the local issues of national importance, we can just look at the environment and all the interests that people have in a better environment. Well, the local impact that we can have in just that area, in terms of stormwater management, in terms of weather and how many trees we plant to help clean our environment locally, in terms of how we manage and require recycling among our trash haulers. All of these things contribute on the bigger scale. Our decision, if the state allows us to, to restrict single-use plastics, a very local decision that has enormous impact on the national level, or could, or could.
Yeah, and obviously, we get to these issues where it talks about the environment, we talk about inclusion, whether that be in diversity, and that comes with the values of our party, and all three of us represent the Democratic Party. So Ron, would you like to tell us why it's important to have a Democrat in your role?
Well, we have Democratic values that I think we share. Probably first and foremost, and also timely, is our appreciation and the importance of diversity. We have Democratic values in terms of the importance of a clean environment. We have Democratic values, from my view, in terms of the need for our economic system to be fair for everyone. That list goes on. But even more basic than that, and more important right now because of the fractured political environment, we have more basic values that we have to find common cause for. We have to identify and find those things that we hold common and that we hold essential as a society and as a community. I don't think that the Greater Doylestown has the polarization that the rest of the country does, but there certainly is polarization here. And we have to find effective ways to communicate with each other and build on those values. Those values, they may translate into legislation. We're always going to have differences in legislation, and that's healthy, that's good. But we've moved away from those differences into something more basic, where frankly, the other party doesn't participate so much in different solutions to the same problems. But I'll be very honest, to no solutions or not even a recognition of the problem as being such.
Yeah, I mean, we obviously are living in very divisive times, and after this 2020 election, we do have these 2021 elections, and in the future, we'll have 2023, et cetera, in these local elections, that hopefully, we can come together and recognize that unifying American, I guess, unity or the commonality that we all have. So Jack, I'll start with you, and then we'll go to Ron on this one. This is my final question for you guys. If people want to get more involved with the Doylestown Borough Local Government, what should they do?
There's a lot of opportunities. In fact, we just went through a round of, I chair what we call the Personnel Committee, which meets on an as-needed basis, looking for, interviewing candidates for positions on some of the boards and commissions that we have. I don't know the exact number, but it's probably, there's probably a dozen different boards and commissions. Fannie Chapman Pool, which has been around for forever, we just interviewed and appointed two new members to it. One was appointed in December, one will be appointed in January due to a resignation. The Economic Advisory Council, we just had two or three people interview for that, those positions. So there are opportunities, and it's a good way to kind of put your toe in the water a little bit, get a sense of what local government is all about. And maybe see something that you want to get more involved with, and something, it's been, we're very fortunate in that a lot of our, the Environmental Advisory Council, we have a lot of expertise on here, that if we had to go out and pay someone to provide that expertise, I don't know that we could afford it without significant impact to our budgets. But yet, we have these people who are community members that are volunteering their time to do that. So that, in my mind, that would be the opportunity for somebody to get involved. And also, there's local political organizations, like the Local Democrat. And also, there's local political organizations, like the, the Local Democratic Organization and stuff. That's another opportunity that exposes you to some of the things that are going on, so.
Yeah, I think, as Jack indicated, among those boards and commissions, there are more than 100 volunteers involved in those. And then, on each of them, there's an opportunity for a junior volunteer, for, for someone that's in high school, I think, a sophomore or above. And, and so there's a position on each of those. Shade Tree, Shade Tree is, that's something that's, we're very excited about for, we have inventoried all of the borough trees, the trees that are in our right of way and in our parks and so forth, so that we can be custodians of them, so that we can, the inventory shows their, their age and, and their health and the size, and obviously, what kind of tree it is. So that going forward, we can, we can be better custodians of those trees that we have. So Shade Tree is, is integral to that, and Shade Tree has an opportunity for, for a high school student to, to be a partner on that, as does our Borough Council, has an opportunity for a junior council person and, and the other boards and commissions. So, so it's, it's really not just an opportunity for adults, but also an opportunity for young people to learn about local government and participate in the kind of decisions that we make.
Awesome. Well, that's all I have for you guys, so I want to thank you guys for watching this, and I want to thank both Mayor Ron Strauss and Borough Council President Jack O'Brien for joining us today. If you guys are watching this on YouTube, be sure to check out our website through the description box below. I want to thank Coru Real Wellness and Colin for hosting us today and recording us here in his studio in Greater Doylestown. So, but you can sign up for future Zoom events in that description box below as well through that link to our website. So thank you guys both again, and I hope to talk to you guys again soon.